Four more minutes. Karen, you lonely over there?
This way nobody is associated with me and tainted by that.
Yeah. Possible they're not a government.
I've been keeping them company. Dwayne doesn't mind the taint.
How was your one? It was good. I had two trips. I was lobbying for the State Department in the budget. They continue to look at foreign relationships as a positive and carrot to join the stick of carrots and other things to make sure that we have ambassadors and people around in these countries. So to me, it's all part of making that decision. It's part of that side. I'm lobbying for thirty-seven hours. And then I was at Lincoln City and that was good. Yeah, yeah, it was good. How was the, how was the chair?
You were a mess. I will tell you.
Yeah. Do you have the dates for next year?
Okay.
I'll help.
Okay. Yes, well, so let's, let's compare. Um, I, I got a number.
Sure.
Yeah. And I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah. It's just like this.
Oh. Yeah. I believe in all of that.
Yeah. And I am number four. Even though they approved your comment, I, we should have done that you were at Lincoln City. We should have added that in there.
Yeah, I should.
Just so that they knew that you just went out.
I think next year is November sixteenth or something.
Very funny.
I don't advertise this because this would be a way out of trouble.
We can't, we can't remove it to number just hold it and also.
That should be Harris.
Councilmember Harris?
I'm here.
Okay, we'll be ready in a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Did you really want to play?
Can you raise some questions?
Sure.
Two minutes. One minute. All right. All right, bye now.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Thanks for coming today.
I love you. Well, you're good.
Yeah, we're good. It's okay though. We're getting there.
Not yet. Vice Mayor Ellis? Vice Mayor Ellis?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be starting in just a second.
All right, thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Chandler City Council on November twenty-four. Council, we have a single item agenda discussion and possible action on the appointment of city manager and employment agreement. I'd like to, I'll lead our invocation tonight and Councilmember Hawkins can lead our pledge of allegiance. I gotta thank you for the responsibility of government, both hearing, listening, deciding. I thank you for this council and our ability to mostly agree, but even when we don't agree, we refuse to be disagreeable. So I pray for wisdom, understanding. I thank you for everyone in this room and their interest and desire to see Chandler continue to serve its citizens well and be a model to the community. So I ask your blessings upon this time here tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hawkins. We got my joke. Okay. Um, we do have two speaker cards here before a motion. I would like to, do we have any more or just two?
Mayor, we just have the two.
Great. So I'll invite Sally Putnam and then Chuck Wolf. Please come on up here, state your name and which municipality you are part of. And you have up to three minutes to share your thoughts and concerns. When the light turns yellow, you've got thirty seconds left and please wrap up.
Okeydoke. I am Sally Putnam. I am resident of Chandler and I am also a business owner. Do I get enough of the, okay. I'm also a business owner here in Chandler and also a voter in Chandler as well. And I'm here to support, to throw my support behind the city manager that we currently have. John has been very good for the city. I am on the board of directors for the Chandler Chamber. And he has really helped us out in a lot of areas, been willing to have conversation with us on a number of topics that were difficult to go through and he handled it very well. And I just kind of feel like when a, when a team has a Patrick Mahomes or Josh Allen as their quarterback, you don't go out and look for other quarterbacks. And I think that we've got, we've got a star. We've got a franchise quarterback on our team. And I just don't think that there's any reason for us to spend our time and our money on an issue when we've already got a good starter. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Good football reference. Chuck Wolf, please come up, state your name and where you're, the city you reside. And you have up to three minutes. When it turns yellow, please wrap up.
Thank you. My name's Chuck Wolf and I live here in Chandler. I also own a business here in Chandler. Chandler's always been a place that supports economic growth and business expansion and community partnerships. And John has carried that on. John has been professional, direct and responsive. But more than that, he has taken the time to understand the long-term needs of employers in Chandler. When companies make decisions about growth, we need certainty and we need a partner at the city who is present, informed and collaborative. We should not waste taxpayer time and money to go out for a search when John is a qualified candidate. I'm on board with Sally. You know, you got a franchise quarterback. Stick with them. Confirming John is the right step to maintain momentum, reassure businesses and residents and show that Chandler is committed to stability and continued growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Those are only two speaker cards for the evening. Council, I'd like to make a motion. And the motion is to approve the appointment of city manager and approval of employment contract with a few caveats and changes. First, the salary would be three hundred and sixty thousand per year with a ten thousand sign-on payment on top. As well as to clean up the sixty-day language in section I-one. And according to B-three, change it consistent with our charter to make sure that you have six, the city manager has six months to find a house. Is there a motion? Who was that, please?
Second, Vice Mayor Ellis, second.
We have a motion by Mayor, second by Vice Mayor. Council, would you like to make comments before we vote? So we'll start with Angel and work her way this way.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last three to four months, our acting city manager has kept our city and our organization moving forward and helping build a foundation of stability and trust with our community. And I want to acknowledge that and I want to thank you, John, for that work that you've been putting in. Since the beginning of this process, I have been very clear about my commitment on honoring our city's traditions, our established processes and the history that guides how we have selected city managers in the past. Back in June, I stated publicly right here on this dais that I would be, that I would proceed with a nationwide recruitment process to review the opportunities for a Chandler, for Chandler's future leadership. One that would allow for a competitive selection and ensure that our residents, employees and community partners would be part of. And I remain committed to my word and I believe that we owe that level of openness and participation to the people that we serve. This council has chosen a different path. While this is not the approach that I advocated for, I respect the decision of this body. My vote tonight is not a reflection on the acting city manager's experience nor ability, but a vote on our missed opportunity to review all possibilities for Chandler's future. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, I thought a lot about what I wanted to say and I think Councilmember Encina said it very well. That, you know, I, Mayor, when you told me that Councilmember Hawkins wanted to bring this item forward, no one was more surprised or happy than I was. Because I think you have proven yourself beyond a shadow of a doubt, in my mind, that you are the best city manager that we can find. I think Councilmember Harris likes to use the phrase "a needle in a haystack" and I do think we found that. My, my hesitation was that I don't always think it's a gift to not make someone competitive because I wanted to give John the ability to go out and prove to everyone else that beyond a shadow of a doubt, he is the best city manager. And I want to make sure that everyone understands or got that. That being said, if the worst thing that happens is that we are moving forward with a fantastic city manager, then I can be okay with that as well. My, my one concern is really, I also really felt and have a very sincere level of discomfort with the fact that this was only posted on Friday and happening on Monday. I've shared that, that I really felt that it didn't give much opportunity for public input. It didn't give much opportunity for the community to review the contract, especially with some of the changes that we have tonight. But that being said, I appreciate the chance to say my piece. All of that being said, we're not voting on the process this evening. We're voting on a contract with an excellent city manager. So my vote's going to be reflecting the fact that we are voting on a contract. And I appreciate the level of discussion that this council had. This was not easy. I appreciate your comments and coming in and bouncing out when we had that discussion. You know, we don't always agree, but I am so grateful that this is the type of council that moves forward respectfully. And everyone in their hearts here is doing what they feel is best for the city. So my vote will reflect the fact that we are voting on a contract with a person that I think is top of the line and the best choice that we could make. Thanks, Mayor.
I'm going to continue with those here, then go to those online and then myself. Councilmember Orlando?
Thank you, Mayor. There's not much more I could say to add to that. Although I am concerned about the process, this will be my fourth, maybe fifth city manager I've hired. And to every one of those who went through a process, we had a nationwide search. It wasn't, it was very economical, by the way. We were able to recruit at an economical price. We had some cases. We had one case where we did hire somebody outside and it was an internal candidate. We had the other three, we stayed with the internal candidate. So it's a mixed bag in that respect. We did start on this process in June. We were all in agreement. We left that room to move forward with, in fact, some folks even said on the dais that night that we want to move forward. And they did not like the previous process, but we're going to fix it with this process. Well, okay, so we're, we're moving ahead tonight. I am concerned that we put this on the agenda on a Friday afternoon about two-thirty, three o'clock for a weekend. And I'm sorry for the audience had to stay out there for three or a couple of hours here. But we had other issues in there, obviously. But I am concerned that we did that. And then, of course, we have a Monday. We're sitting here. In fact, even at the last minute, we've had some scurrying around to make changes. It just didn't look professional in my mind. We should have had the executive session tonight. We should have discussed with John what the changes were and then moved forward at appropriate time as a professionally done. Now, I know we could walk and chew gum. I get all that. But by the same token, we're a very professional city chamber and we're very a model city when it comes to doing things the right way. John, I've known you many years, probably more than anybody in this council. You, you in fact, for a record, John had talked to me several years ago about potentially putting in when Marshall left. But because of circumstance happening in Mesa, he decided not to put in. So he wanted this job even three, four years ago. And I appreciate we're giving you opportunity tonight, John, with this contract. And again, my concern is the process to allow the citizens to input, have the stakeholders, the businesses. You know, whether it's a day process or a discussion point with the council, have the community weigh in on this issue. We won't be doing that, obviously, tonight because it's on the agenda. Let's see, where was I here? So, yeah, bottom line is, we, we deviate from the process, majority of the council that wanted to do that. I did not want to deviate for the record. I wanted to continue with the process outside. Like I said, in four other cases, I've done it before. It was very successful. Everyone came away looking great. We did the right choice, made the right decision. We moved on from that. So I'm concerned about that. And, but obviously the reality sets in. Obviously, there's the votes to move this forward. And I will abide by that because that's, that's our democratic process, as you said earlier in our, in your implication. But again, I am very concerned that we set precedent here. We went out for a police chief. We did a nationwide search. Economic development, I mean, excuse me, planning development person, we went out for a nationwide search. There was nobody saying, well, we got a great candidate here or we should be not circumventing, have the citizens' input on this. So for transparency reasons and I got an issue with this process. But again, we're voting on the contract tonight. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Thank you, Mayor. To your point, I also want to address the selection process for our city manager, especially because of my initial vote. So a few thoughts were, when I began this process, I had real concerns about how it had unfolded. I had shared that directly with Mr. Pombier and promised that regardless, I would support his appointment because when he succeeds, Chandler succeeds. And to his credit, he hit the ground running and has proved himself consistently through his own work. Over the past three and a half months, with input from residents, employees and business owners, one message has been very consistent. John Pombier has earned the trust and confidence of this community. Hiring him permanently was obviously not our original plan, but throughout this extended interview, he has delivered at every step. And every conversation I've had with staff, citizens and business leaders has been overwhelmingly positive about his leadership and steady direction. As a council, we're committed to transparency, integrity and fiscal responsibility. Launching a national search now would not reflect those values and when we have already had a proven leader in place. Based on his performance, his deep understanding of Chandler and our culture and a strong support from our community, I'm confident in moving forward with John as our city manager and it's the right move. So thank you for all coming out tonight and I appreciate all your input.
Councilmember Harris?
Mayor, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to just take a moment and to everyone that's there listening and attending in person, just want to take a moment and speak very plainly about our city manager contract and the process that brought us here. First, under our city charter, it is the council, not the city manager, who sets the terms for the city manager's contract. We, we do it within the framework that the voters have already approved. That's important to me. This isn't like some side deal. It's a charter-driven, it's a lawful and it's rooted in voter direction. In other words, it was a good process per our charter. I also want folks to understand this is very important. This decision did not happen overnight. For the last four months, we've had, we have been in the process of evaluation. And during that four-month evaluation process, I've watched John very closely, how he interacts with council, how he works with our staff and how he shows up for our community. I've watched how he responds under pressure, how he listens when people disagree with him and how he carries the responsibility of leading the city as dynamic as Chandler is. During those four months, there was not, not one delay that he, he gave to our residents. They, that was the evaluation process for me and it was a good process per the charter. Now, we start with the charter, then we deal with voter direction. Then our charter allows the council to set the terms and severance through the negotiated agreement within the limits of the state of the law that we have here. And then we move into an evaluation negotiation. That includes conversations and executive sessions that were, where we talked about his performance, leadership and what's in the best, the best interest of Chandler. We worked with legal counsel to make sure every step is responsible and defensible. And when we came, when we came right back here to this public dais where, where the final decision is made in an open, on the record, where every resident can see it, question it and hold us accountable. And for me, this vote is about, this, for me, this vote is about smart, people first, voter-approved approach to leadership. Smart because we are protecting both the integrity of the organization and the interests of the taxpayers. People first because the city manager's decisions touch every corner of our residents' daily life. And it's voter-approved because the authority we're exercising tonight comes directly from the charter changes that people support it. So when I cast my vote, it's not based on personality or politics. It's based on a four-month evaluation process conducted as a good process per the charter of John's interaction with council, staff and our community. And on a clear, transparent process laid out by our charter. Chandler deserves a city manager who understands that we answer to the people in, in a council that takes responsibility seriously. And I tend to honor that tonight with my vote. Thanks, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I would like the people of Chandler to know that my vote tonight is going to be for them. Because they've trusted me five years ago to sit on the dais and look in their best interest. And what is it that we are supposed to do every single day as their elected official? Few months ago, I trusted my colleagues when they came to us and said, besides anyone else that could have been a temporary manager, John was the best that we can get for the position. I came on the dais and I told the people of Chandler, I will vote yes for John because my colleagues have made a point and arguably told me that they believe he is the man for the job. Tonight, I'm going to go on that same trust again with my same colleagues who have called me and stated that they believed then that John was the man. And because of my interaction with him and the way that I have seen him under pressure with almost five of our leadership members from twelve years in action, people who have been with us for more than ten years, live in their positions. And John builds a team by none. And he looked into everyone of our leadership and said, this person will be able to continue to lead the city forward with him. And I trusted that he did it, not only because he wanted to pop himself up, but because he had been looking into Chandler, working in Chandler, working with the nonprofit, seeing all the needs that our people have from the lowest all the way to the top. And build a team that will be able to help them in every wish way. Every call will be answered. Every need will be met to the best of his ability. Tonight, my vote is not only going to reflect the trust that I have in my colleagues then, but it's also going to reflect my, the trust that I have in the people of Chandler, in John and also the staff that we have, that when I spoke with them and they told me that they want to feel stable, they want to feel that they have someone at their realm who's going to continue to lead them forward. This vote is for my employees, all of them. And this is for the two hundred and ninety-one thousand people that live here in the city of Chandler. Thank you to the people of Chandler for having given me this opportunity tonight to vote for you and you alone. Always for the love of Chandler. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That leaves me. Council, I, it's not just words to me, but I deeply appreciate when we get together and, and haggle over an issue. There's a psalm that says, "Come, let us reason." And I think that we do that well and I want to commend each and every one of you. We come from different places. And I, I've never questioned, and I know you don't question, the rest of council is, do you, do you believe you're making the best decisions possible? And I want to commend each and every one of you for that, that you move because of an onus of why are you here and how can you make Chandler better? And again, I commend each and every one of you for that. I believe that once we started this process, I told acting city manager many times that I didn't like how we got there, but I'm glad we got there. And I find myself pivoting and not on, on the position of the city manager, but on the process. And I've worked under five city managers here and have elected or voted in four of them. And I think that Mr. Pombier stands up with all of them. And I look forward to your work in continuing to represent Chandler, the business community, our nonprofits, working with schools, working with companies big and small, as well as responding to residents of giving us good intel, of giving us great opinions. And you've given me wise advice many times in the brief months that you've been here and I've appreciated that. And you have won me over, not that there was ever a movement against, but in terms of believing that you are the, should be, the next city manager. And I'm grateful that you've not only applied, but hopefully you'll say yes to the contract. And I'm grateful that you've not only applied, but hopefully you'll say yes to the contract. So I thank council, I want to thank our community for continuing to have trust in us and continuing to put the, the needs and the opportunities of Chandler in our hands. So with that, I'd like to call the question, council vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries by majority, Councilmember Encina is dissenting.
All right. Thank you, council. We have no unscheduled public appearances tonight, so that concludes our meeting. We'll be back here in two weeks. Thank you, council. Welcome aboard officially, Mr. City Manager.